I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Dankert, will you do the roll call, please?
Mayor Steem.
Present.
Councilmember Large Anderson.
Present.
Councilmember Bowden.
Present.
Carolyn.
Present.
Enright.
Present.
King.
Present.
Austin.
Present.
Jordal.
Present.
We have a quorum, Your Honor.
Thank you. Item one is adoption of the agenda. It looks like we have a 16 as the addition. Everybody should have a copy. With that, we need a motion.
So moved. Second?
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Item number two is a motion for approval of council minutes from February 3rd, 2013.
So moved.
Third, second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Item number three, there are any citizens present tonight who would suggest counsel on items that are not on tonight's agenda. Come on, Matt.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. I was just going to say a few comments concerning the flood dikes out here. Last time I was trying to outline the purpose of government and anyway, I was against the ripoff of common taxpayers. Anyway, the North Main Street dikes seem to be rather super costly and they're going to be ugly and unnecessary against the taxpayers to benefit like Keen Motors and a few private businesses at common taxpayer expense. Anyway, like a million dollar dike alone for like Keen Motors and they only pay like about $10,000 taxes a year to county and city. Anyway, these John Erickson plans, they flood out the Salvation Army, Queens Church in my neighborhood under bad floods. And anyway, a much cheaper way to flood out the Salvation Army, Queens Church in my neighborhood would have been to like build a floodgate at the dam or a spillway tunnel at the dam, much cheaper and then you don't have the water going over the banks along North Main Street. Then the floods of the Cedar River could be kept below the banks and not flood Keen Motors and the rest of North Main Street while yet flooding the Salvation Army, Queens Church in my neighborhood. Anyway, the previous city, it seems like a scam at vast public expense, unnecessary. It seems to violate the Minnesota False Claims Act that deals with misrepresentation, fraud, and unjust enrichment of like private banks at the expense of common taxpayers and certain private parties benefit. And anyway, I object. Just a few comments.
All right. Thanks, Matt. Mr. Reverend Rapinski. Welcome, gang. Some of you are my friends. Hopefully, all of you. Marv Rapinski, I live here in Austin. Thanks for just my saying a word. Matt was on my doorstep recently and I noticed in the bicycle he was driving, though he protests about taxes, he does not have a license for his bicycle, right?
Shame on you, Matt.
So anyhow, he gave me a whole sheaf of documents and I went through them and I want to say this for the council and you persons. When a document is given, and I did read every page and then went to his place to return them, when communists and fascists and liars and every word that has antonyms for that appears in a document, I feel it is a sad place to have a citizenry like this. And as I told you, Matt, I'm not on your wavelength, but I am your friend. I'm a Christian, liberal at that, but I am your friend. Thank you. Thank you, Reverend. Anybody else? If there is nothing else, we come to awards and recommendations. I have on here the proclamation for Paint the Town Pink, but I gave all my copies away at the dinner on Friday night. Oh, you have one. Okay, thank you. So we'll read, this is Paint the Town Pink Week. And it says, whereas Paint the Town Pink is a collaborative community event to raise funds for cancer research at the Hormel Institute. And whereas Paint the Town Pink has raised nearly $200,000 for breast cancer research in 2011. And the goal for 2014 is Paint the Town Pink is to raise $150,000. And whereas a signature event, the painted pink sells out its 2,000 seats each year. Whereas in 2011 hockey jerseys were auctioned off, 2012 was the first year of Paint the Town Pink, which included youth sports events, a pink pancake breakfast, and a fishing for a cure. 2013 introduced plunging for pink, polar plunge at East Side Lake and a citywide decorating contest. And whereas this year rural communities are joining the effort with their own activities. The Mauer County Fair is adding a pink smashing cancer demolition derby and K-A-U-S Radio is adding a pledge for pink radio-a-thon. And whereas the Paint the Town Pink is truly a grassroots community effort to raise important funds and increase awareness for the Hormel Institute while bringing visitors to our community. Now therefore, I, Thomas Day Steem, Mayor of the City of Austin, Minnesota, do hereby proclaim, February 14th through February 23rd, 2014, as Paint the Town Pink Week. Thank you, Jeff. And I hope everybody finds some way to get involved. I know Judy jumped in the lake and she has pink hair tonight. So she's very much involved and we're very proud of her and I know Janet's very-
That's not from the lake, is it, Judy?
Janet's also very involved in it and we're proud of both of them for their efforts. Okay, now we get to with the addition. Number five is a motion for the consent, oh, not that, for the consent agenda. So we need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Item number six is under public hearing, public hearing on street sidewalk improvement on 8th Avenue Southwest, 12th Street to 18th Street, Project 1A14. Mr. Lang. I assume that's why most people are here tonight.
Yes, we had held an informational meeting on Wednesday to present the same PowerPoint presentations that we'll be presenting tonight, just to get information out there to the public about what we're proposing for our street projects and the costs involved with those. So for the first item on the agenda, excuse me, item number six, that would be for 8th Avenue Southwest. Have a PowerPoint here to run through, describes the project a little bit along with costs and payment options.
Steve, do you want to do these one at a time and then we okay them or should we do them as a?
Let's do them one at a time and then people can speak on their particular project. Yeah. 8th Avenue Southwest is from 12th Street to 18th Street Southwest. This is a map of the project area located right on the south side of the fairgrounds. Just some project photos showing the existence of the condition of the existing pavement. We have done some maintenance out here in, over the years, did a lot of work along the curb lines that had deteriorated. Now we're starting to get a lot of centerline deterioration. Some more similar photos. This photo kind of shows our spillways that we have along 8th Avenue. There is not any existing underground storm sewer. So we get a lot of drainage off the fairground site. All that water runs west until it reaches storm sewer and into Turtle Creek. So a lot of these intersections, we have problems with drainage. There were some water main breaks in this area this winter. We had these intersections ice up real bad without having the storm sewer to collect that water. And just another photo in a different area on 8th Avenue showing some of that pavement condition. The project will involve removal of the existing bituminous pavement and removal of the curb and gutter. We will replace it with new bituminous pavement, curb and gutter at a width of 38 feet. That'll be about one foot wider on each side to meet state aid requirements. We'll replace the end drives, entrance walks, and grass boulevards. We'll replace deficient sidewalk and we'll provide handicap ramps at the intersections. Right now, it's kind of hit and miss. I think most of the pedestrian ramps are just on the north side. In addition, while the roadway is under construction, we will construct new storm sewer like I talked about to get rid of those spillways and provide some subsurface drainage for that along with the tile line. We'll also, the sanitary sewer has been televised and we have a couple areas that we will line to eliminate infiltration and roots. Austin Utilities, they plan to replace, upgrade the water main on 8th Avenue and services will be evaluated at that time. And what I mean by that is they will look at the service. If it's an older service, if it happens to be lead or galvanized, they will pull in a new service to the house, a new copper water service at that time. The gas main will be replaced and electrical conduit will be installed for future underground crossings. This will be a two-phase project with the fair going on. We'll do one phase before the fair and one phase after the fair, kind of the fair splitting it there in early August. The project benefits, we will improve ride and safety, we'll improve the drainage with the new storm sewer and the underground tile, we'll improve appearance, we'll be able to upgrade the utilities, we'll decrease maintenance costs, install those handicap ramps, we'll also work to eliminate any trip hazards with the existing sidewalk at the same time. We have four payment options and these payment options will apply to all the different projects that we talk about tonight. Those four payment options are number one, you could, you'll get your final bill in August, approximately, in August for this project, all these projects. And at that time, you'll have until October 31st to pay that amount in full without interest. Option number two is you could pay at least 50% by October 31st and the remaining would go on your taxes. When it goes on your taxes, it's spread out over 15 years with interest. Option number three is once you receive that bill, you could do nothing and the entire amount would automatically go on your taxes, again, spread out over 15 years with interest. And the first time that would show up on your taxes is in the spring of 2015. And then option number four is if you meet certain age and income guidelines, you could complete some paperwork to have that assessment deferred on your taxes until such time as the property is sold. So those are our four payment options and those, again, will apply to all the different projects that we talk about tonight. Estimated assessments, looking back in our research, we were not able to find any previous documentation of project assessments in this area. Our documentation goes back to the 1960s. So it's, if that is the case, if that was approximately when it was built, in that late 50s, early 60s, it's lasted a little over 50 years. So it's got a good useful life. Our street assessment rates, we have set assessment rates for residential property, $41.50 per foot. And we do have one commercial property on it on this project, which is $59.50 per foot. We have sidewalk assessment rates for those that have been identified for replacement at $100 to $110 per panel. And also, the panels to the driveway are a little bit thicker. Those are $130 to $135 per panel. And again, if a homeowner chooses to put it on their assessments, on their taxes, it would be at an interest rate of 4.75%. That is all that I have on this project.
Council, do you have anything? Okay, this is a public hearing, so if anybody in the audience has come here tonight to speak to the council on this issue, raise your hand if you're here for this issue. Why don't you step up to the podium, give us your name and where you live. Pete, I think he's going out. You can come on up. Anybody else after Pete's done? Are you the only one here? All right. I know you're all here for something, but this is, we'll take them one at a time. Mr. Grover, we need your name and address.
Thank you. And I thank the mayor and the council for giving me a few moments. My name is Peter Grover. I live at 507 Sixth Avenue Northwest. I got a question for Stephen here, though. On that 65, I hit the speed limit now, so I qualify. On that 65, age 65 option, of course, deferred to the sale of the property, I guess I'd forgotten about that. Is that, does that still accumulate interest all the way up until the sale? Because that didn't really stand. It just said you could defer it until age 65.
Yep. When it's deferred on the taxes, yes, it collects interest up until it is paid off or until the sale of the home. Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Well, and I'm not here to complain at all. In fact, I'm not even looking for money. I just, I just, you know, Reverend is doing a great job, but my concern is the way the assessments work. And I'd seen towns today in the bank and I kind of colored it a little bit. But my understanding is that the way the law says now, that your property value should increase at least as much as the assessment. And I think the system is just getting warped. Just the way the market forces are going, that's not happening anymore. I had an assessment for, last year I had a property at 411 10th Street Northwest and the assessment was $2,781.87. Well, the property went down in value. It did not go up in at least this amount. So that's a violation of law. Now, you guys don't make those laws. I mean, I'm not criticizing you guys, but there needs to be a better way of doing it, a fair way. And I think the state of Minnesota, I'm sure that Austin is not the only community that's grappling with that. Because you've got to pay your street, no question about it. But this system just, it's not working anymore. And I got another assessment this year of a property that I own at 807 9th Avenue Southeast and that's $2,093.36. So I guess that's my concern, but I don't see properties in, at least in certain parts of town, they're just not going up. And those assessments will just, you know, they won't open that much value. So I think we have to take another look at that. I don't, if I'm making sense.
Yeah, I'll just touch on that a little bit. We have presented that to council in past years. I think maybe it was even last year we talked about that a little bit. And different ways of funding street projects, maybe that would be through the tax levy. I think we went through a process with Mr. Dankert's assistance as to how much the tax levy would have to increase in order to fund the street projects going forward. And then also, how do you deal with people that maybe were assessed last year, like Mr. Grover was assessed on a street project last year? If we were to switch to a tax levy system, how do we prorate those people? How do we give them a grace period? All the different unique things like that. In going back, like I said, our records go back to 1960 and that's when this assessment policy, way for paying for street projects was developed back in the 60s. Once we started that process back then, kind of carrying it through to now, it really makes it much more difficult to change midstream. But that was something that we did talk about about a year ago at this time.
I think further explanation, what we talked about is just taking all the street, the money to fix them out of the tax rules and raising everybody's taxes to do that. But, you know, we, it doesn't matter, specifics, because I think everybody in the council got a lot of negative feedback on that and I would venture to say that's not going to happen.
Well, you guys are doing the best you can. I'm not here to criticize. Stephen does a great job. I mean, I'm just here saying that the system has just kind of evolved into a situation where it's just not equitable. Relative to your concern about changing midstream, I think it was in 1990, I had a water supply line, whatever, on Christmas Eve in one of my properties. And the main was across the street, it's colder than like right now, pretty stuff. But I had five families that didn't have water, so I had to do what I had to do. I had to get the acumen, I had to go under the street, get that thing hooked up and it cost me $6,000 bucks. And I thought, God, what a Christmas present is that? Anyway, then the next year, they changed the policy. Thought it happened a month later, it'd have been no cost to me. But, you know, you can't figure all that stuff out. You have to make a decision, go with, you know, that's just the way it is.
Well, I understand, I think we understand that we did have some issues with the lancing when that came in.
Yeah.
And I think we're revising the way we annex places and maybe we can look at it.
Well, you might, you probably should get your legislators in here because-
Probably would have to.
Like I said, I don't think it's unique to Austin. And you guys really are doing the very best you can, but you're kind of dealing with it weak hand on that deal. Because I think that you're setting yourself up for some future litigation, because you can't defend it.
I think to your argument, I understand and appreciate what you're saying, Mr. Grover, but to your, to your point that the valuation of the property didn't go up $2,000 some dollars after the street, to me, I look at that as a positive, you're not paying more on your taxes, so.
Well, then I'd better pay some more so I can get my property down some more.
It could be worse. You could be paying an assessment plus higher taxes then too.
No, I know what, though. I'm concerned about what I pass on to my children and, you know, I don't mind. If the property value goes up, I'm okay.
Right, but as we go through a period of where everybody's value, you know, is basically, most values have gone down because of the real estate problems last couple of years. So basically, you know, what we're saying is you can't do any street improvements until properties go back up.
And there needs to be a way to address that kind of roller coaster market. Maybe there needs to be a means test or maybe there needs to, I don't know what there needs to be, but the system now just isn't working and it's probably going to get worse.
I think it bears looking into.
And hey, I appreciate what you guys do. I don't mean, I'm not here complaining. I just, you've got a tough, kind of, some tough decisions to make.
Well, you should. You were on the council for a while.
Yeah, I've got my share of them.
Okay. All right, well, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Anybody else? Okay, with that, then what do we need? A resolution on this? We need a resolution for-
So moved the resolution.
Second.
Mr. Dankert. This is a resolution ordering improvement, approving plans and specifications and ordering advertisements for bids. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, and we have a resolution and the second, Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Bowden.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Jordal.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes, 7-0, Your Honor.
Okay, thank you. Our next one is item number seven. It's a public hearing on street and sidewalk improvements on 8th Avenue, or 8th Street Northwest, 17th Avenue to 18th Avenue and 17th Avenue Northwest, 4th Street to 8th Street, Project 7A13. Mr. Lang.
Yes, this project, as you've described, is in more of a commercial area out by Hy-Vee, Holiday Inn, kind of that, that commercial area of town. These roadways were constructed in, I believe, 1990 as part of the Holiday Inn development out there. With this project, we're looking at just doing a surfacing project, just a mill and overlay of the pavement to try and extend the useful life. Again, originally constructed in 1990, so it's about 23, 25 years old. We will increase the crown as part of this to improve the drainage off the roadway, try and get that water to shed off better. And then also, we're looking at to improve multiple modes of transportation in this area, we're looking at constructing a sidewalk along the south side of 17th Avenue from 4th Street to 8th Street to give better access to the businesses, hotels, and restaurants. Also, as a side note on that, as part of the upcoming Hy-Vee project, they will be installing sidewalk along the Hy-Vee side of 8th Street. So it'll be, this will be in conjunction with that to create more of a pedestrian access into this commercial area. Again, we have project benefits of improving ride and safety, improved drainage in this case, improved appearance, and decreased maintenance costs. Also, providing, installing this new sidewalk will help for accessibility to the area. And with this being more of a maintenance project, we are looking at no assessments for this project. That is all.
Council?
I've got a question on the sidewalk. If it were to be a bike trail width, would it be the same width?
Typically, we install, construct our bike trails to be about eight to 10 feet in width. Sometimes those get a little tight in boulevards, especially one like this where we're coming in after the fact, there's already existing utilities there that we have to work around. So we haven't, we haven't laid out the exact alignment of the sidewalk yet, but just in looking at it, the south side seems like the location for the sidewalk. And right now, we're just looking at a five-foot wide sidewalk to fit in amongst the other utility boxes that are there.
Any else? Once again?
So then it would be the property owner's responsibility to clear these sidewalks?
That's correct. The first time that the sidewalk is installed, we install it as part of the project. There's no cost for that first installation, but then it is up to the adjacent property owner to maintain it from there on out. Yep.
Thank you.
Any else? Once again, it's a public hearing. Is anybody in the audience here to speak to us on this issue? If there is none, we need a resolution for seven.
So moved the resolution.
Second. Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Bowden.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Jordal.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes, 7-0, Your Honor.
Thank you. Number eight is a, the public hearing on street and sidewalk improvement in the Kaufman Park area, 9th Avenue South, excuse me, Southeast, abandoned railroad to 8th Street. 10th Avenue Southeast abandoned railroad to 8th Street. 11th Avenue Southeast abandoned railroad to 8th Street. 6th Street Southeast, 8th Avenue to 10th Avenue. And 7th Street Southeast, 8th Avenue to 11th Avenue, Project 6A13. Mr. Lang.
As you've described this, we refer to this as the Kaufman Park area. And on your screens, there is a map showing, kind of color coding, two different phases of a project. It's about a nine, eight, nine block area, so it would be broken up into two phases with the area in red going first, that would be 6th Street and 10th Avenue, being kind of the first phase along with a couple stub streets there. And then the second phase would be the area in blue, which would be the majority of 7th Avenue, majority of, excuse me, 9th Avenue, 7th Street, and 11th Avenue. So kind of, kind of broken up, trying to do a main corridor first, keep access as close as possible for residents so they don't have to walk too far during the construction period. But as I represented at the informational meeting, street projects are an inconvenience to property owners and there is a period of time that they're not going to be able to access their garages with their vehicle and things like that. Again, just some project photos showing some of the things that we're trying to address, mainly pavement deterioration. Again, this is another area where we've been out there doing a lot of patching over the years and now the areas that we didn't patch are now breaking up. We also have some drainage issues around catch basins in the lower left-hand corner there. Again, we'll look to improve the sidewalk with pedestrian ramps and things like that as well. With this project, we'll remove the existing bituminous pavement and curb and gutter. On the avenues, we will construct the new road at 32 feet wide and we're proposing on the streets to construct it at 36 feet wide, assuming that most of the traffic in this area wants to funnel toward 8th Avenue. So we'll make those streets a little bit wider to get traffic up to 8th Avenue. And 36 is our standard width. We are narrowing it up a little bit on the avenues just to fit the existing features and it's a narrow right-of-way on most of those avenues as well. We'll replace the end drives, entrance walks, and grass boulevards. We'll install those accessible ramps at the intersections. And we're also proposing on this project as well to construct one block stretch of sidewalk where there currently is none on 6th Street between 8th Avenue and 9th Avenue. All the other areas have sidewalk on at least one side and we're proposing some sidewalk in this one block stretch. We will, with underground utilities, we will look at the storm sewer, replace any necessary storm sewer, catch basins and laterals. Again, construct new drainage tile. The sanitary sewer, we have a lot of infiltration in this area, especially on 10th Avenue as we've televised it. Lot of infiltration, so we'll be lining some of these sanitary sewers to eliminate that infiltration. We'll also, we have some mid-block homes on a couple of the streets that don't have a sanitary sewer main directly in front of their house. They actually have a long service that runs to the avenue. We'll extend sewer main to the front of that home and stub out a service so that sometime in the future, they have the opportunity to hook up to that sewer service and have access right in front of their home instead of having that long service connection all the way down to the avenue. And finally, Austin Utilities will replace the water main and again, upgrade those services as needed in the area. Bottom note there, again, it's a two-phase project, trying to describe the different areas, but I think the map really shows it the best as to where the different phases are. Again, we have the same project benefits, improved ride, improved drainage, appearance. We're able to upgrade those underground utilities, decrease maintenance costs, improve pedestrian access, and also fix any deficient sidewalk. Again, we have those same payment options. I can review those if anybody has any questions. And I also have handouts if anybody would like to take one home with them on the payment options.
They're all the same. All the payment options for all these projects are the same. Would that be correct?
That's correct. And lastly, same with the assessments, looking back in our information, we were not able to find any previous assessments for this area, likely dating back into that late 50s, early 60s time period based on when those homes were built. Assessment rate, $41.50 per foot. We do have a couple properties that don't have existing curb and gutter. In those locations, there would be an extra $12 per lineal foot charge to install curb and gutter for the first time. We have those same sidewalk assessment rates for replacement of existing sidewalk. Again, when it goes in new for the very first time, there is no initial cost. And same interest rate of 4.75% if they choose to put it on their taxes. That is all that I have on this project.
Council, anybody want to address this project? Okay, this is, once again, a public hearing. I know we have people here that live in this area. Does anybody wish to address the council on this? Yes, sir. Come on up, give us your name and your address and your concerns.
John Pike, seven hundred, Eighth Avenue Southeast. Not much of a public speaker, so excuse me if I say...
Don't worry about it.
Question for Steve quick. What side were you recommending for the sidewalk?
We're proposing that the sidewalk on Sixth Street between Eighth Avenue and Ninth Avenue be constructed on the west side.
How many feet of road, how much property you're going to have to take for the expansion of the road?
Right. On Seventh Street, this section of roadway is probably about thirty-four to thirty-five feet wide, so by going to thirty-six, it's really a minor width adjustment. Yep.
I'm on the west side of, sorry, east side of Sixth Street and...
Eighth Avenue.
Yeah, sorry. I know our whole neighborhood basically doesn't want a sidewalk put in, period. The houses are all close to the road. Sidewalks will take part of driveways. My car will be parked on a sidewalk, which is illegal, in my driveway. And with losing some roadage, or whatever, losing some property to the road, it's also going to take that up. Sidewalk will be basically chopping down one of my trees, which is my only tree on my property, main tree, and my back neighbor's property, which they're not here, it'll be like three or four feet away from their windows. So, our whole block is just not set up for a sidewalk to run down it. I guess, in my opinion, I'd prefer no sidewalk at all. If there has to be one, I'd like it on the west side. That's my statement. Thank you.
Question. I noticed when we were over there, there's stakes. Looks like they've staked out the sidewalks. Is that the city that did that, or the property owners?
The city did that.
Well, that is close. I would ask if we could save any of those trees, but I have a tree near my side, and I've seen, you can see it all over, and it buckles the sidewalk after a little bit.
Both sides have trees that are going to uproot the sidewalk.
I, I did go visit with the property own, I've visited with the property owners and came to the assessment hearing last week and went and looked at the stakes. And as much as I believe in complete streets and sidewalks, in this instance, I do not feel that we need a sidewalk for that one-block area. The houses are close together, they're close to the street. You're going to be removing some trees or having trees close to the sidewalk that will crumble, and then they'll have to be repaired. And it's one block, and it's actually a dead-end street if you go down another block. So, it really doesn't lead, like, to a school where kids are walking. And we recently didn't put in sidewalk out by South Gate School because the citizens didn't want it. Well, there, they had much larger lots, much larger areas. They wouldn't have been out much except to shovel. And we did not put in the sidewalk because they were upset. And I've talked to many of these people, and they, and I've been out there, and I would recommend that we do not put the sidewalk in for that block.
Are you talking just that one block?
One block from Sixth to Seventh.
Yep.
Or Eighth to Ninth, I'm sorry.
Question.
Roger.
What's the compelling reason to put sidewalks on that one block?
We're just, we're just looking at, you know, a lot of the push recently has been for complete streets. We have a complete street policy, which says we will look at multiple modes of transportation whenever we do a street reconstruction project, and that's what we've done here. This entire nine-block area, there is sidewalk on one side of the road throughout the entire area. This is the only block that does not have sidewalk on either side. So, we're just looking to complete the sidewalk throughout the area and provide another form of transportation to get residents off from the, having to walk on the roadway.
Is there anybody here in the audience that is here to address this issue in this, in this area? Yes, sir. Why don't you come on up and give us your name and your address?
My name is Jim Dodd. I live across from John. And where I got a figure...
What's your address? We need your address.
Six oh eight Eighth Avenue Southeast.
Okay, thank you.
And where I got a figured out, you're going to, putting that sidewalk in there is going to take up about twenty-five to thirty-three percent of my lawn. And I don't think it's called for.
So, you're against it?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay. Anybody else? Sir, why don't you come on up here? Marv, let's get the people that live over there first, anyway. Yes, sir?
I'm Mike Leahan. I live on six oh nine Ninth Avenue Southeast. Like John stated, none of us want sidewalk. I mean, I have just about a hundred and fifty signatures in two days saying no sidewalk.
You're on Ninth Avenue, right?
Ninth Ave. I'm the one with the big pine trees. They're about three hundred years old. I don't care.
They'd have to go?
Well, you're going to do the street. That's going to kill, take some main roots under the road. I don't mean, there's no getting around that, and I understand that. You go into my, you go into the yard, you're going to take the roots there. And whereas, you guys were, somebody did come out, I know, if you looked, the main root towards the yard is going to be cut. There's no getting around it. It's going to take the trees. There's just no getting around it. I mean, that, that's a shame because they are three hundred years old. It's just, there's just no reason for it. I mean, we've been broken into on my property five times within the last six years. That sidewalk is so close, it's just making it convenient for them to walk into my garage. On my side, on John's side, it just doesn't matter. I mean, it's, our, my house is of nineteen forty-three, I believe. There's never been a sidewalk there. There's never been a need for a sidewalk on either side. I just don't understand. I mean, I understand the city wants it as close to uniform for ease and us for everybody, but, I mean, it's never had one. There's never been a complaint. I just don't understand why start putting it in for a block and wrecking our value of our properties. Because if you put that sidewalk in at my yard, there is, there's going to be no one who wouldn't want to buy that house, ever, because there's going to be no yard there. Same with John's, same with Davis's across the road from me. There's going to be no, no yard for anybody to use. It just doesn't make sense.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Yes, ma'am. And if you're here to speak to this, don't be shy. I mean, you know, I know you said you're not a public speaker, but nobody is, and I guarantee you, you're having an effect on the council. Can't tell you the outcome, but I know they're listening. Yes, ma'am?
Hi, my name is Jill Schlaughy, and I live at six oh five Ninth Avenue. And I'm here for a couple of different reasons, but one being the sidewalk. I'm just here to support both sides of the road, the trees, and it gets so close to people's houses, and all four of them, people on that road will lose their driveways. And so, I'm just here to support that. I have young children, and we walk around that whole area, and, well, it would be nice to have a sidewalk. It's not worth, to me at least, it's not worth wrecking the trees, making these neighbors lose their green spaces, making them lose their parking. We don't, there's not a lot of people out walking around in that neighborhood. It's not a high-traffic area. So, I mean, I, walking on that road right there is totally safe feeling. I don't never get worried about cars or any of that kind of stuff. And just with the trees, they're absolutely beautiful, and they're, I mean, they're so old and majestic, and we walk underneath them, and we see all the animals, and I've seen eagles fly out of there. We're not far from the Cedar River, so I would just ask that you guys reconsider the sidewalk altogether and maybe just eliminate it altogether. And I have a couple of things.
Very good.
No, if it's about your project.
It's about the project.
Yep.
Okay, so that's the sidewalk part. So, I'm on six oh five Ninth Avenue, and it's a dead end. And they, there's no curb there right now, and they're, they want to put the curb in. And I guess I'm just asking to maybe relook at it, instead of just putting the regular old curb in. I think it's called gully curb can be installed instead, so that people can still, like, ride their bikes up it. People park on the grass on their property because there's just not a lot of parking and a lot of space down there. So, I would ask that maybe the curb be changed to a gully curb, or whatever that's called, that you can just, like, bike up or drive up it and stuff. People park boats and stuff in their, you know, their yards and stuff, and it won't be accessible if there's full-on curb there. So, that's that. And then, my, one other question I have received is, so where are we going to have to park and, like, bring our garbage and stuff? Because I'm at that very dead end of that red. You know, how am I going to walk across the torn-up road?
If I go back to the map here...
Maybe this was something I should have just asked you.
That's fine. Yeah, with dead-end roadways like that, it becomes very difficult. In, in the past, when we did the Fourth Street project, people along here were allowed to drive across the railroad track area. And, you know, for you, I would say your nearest parking spot is going to be, if you come in on Ninth Avenue and go all the way to as far west as you can get, that would be option A. Or the other option would be is to maybe talk with Greenmans and see if there's any way you could get access across their property to be able to get closer to your home from that side of the railroad tracks, or the abandoned railroad tracks.
And then, like, with the garbage, so like, let's say I have to park over here. I mean, how am I going to walk across a torn-up road with a garbage can?
Yep. And, and that's usually what people have to do, is take the garbage to the nearest available street. So, in that case, you would have to take it to, to the east, to Ninth Avenue, across the Sixth Avenue, across the Sixth Street intersection. And, and then just to address the, her concerns about curb and gutter, you know, we, we like to put in curb and gutter to control the drainage. We have looked at this area at the end of Ninth Avenue where it abuts the old railroad right-of-way. The railroad right-of-way goes up quite, quite a bit, so we were looking at the possibility, maybe eliminating some of that curb and gutter that extends out into the old railroad right-of-way and just putting in pavement. We have looked at that. We've also looked at maybe just providing a couple curb cuts so that if people need to access that railroad property, that would be another way. So, we've looked at those two options, and I would say, right now, we're tentative looking at just eliminating the curb where it crosses over that railroad, old railroad right-of-way line, which would be eliminating seventy-five feet of curb, approximately.
Thank you all for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else? Are you?
Please come in.
Need your name and address, sir.
Scott Moxel at six oh four Ninth Avenue Southeast. Just to touch, based on what Jill said, I live on the, the very dead end, just to eliminate the curb, just for the parking and a little bit of extra fun space, you know, for the kids running around their bikes. Also, you know, my property's been paying property tax for, you know, a good seventy years, and I don't feel that I, I should be added on to my property tax just for the road. Seems like a lot of money to me. It just, it does, it just doesn't seem right. On, on top of that, you're charging an interest on that, too, so I don't, I don't feel that that's also right.
All right. Thank you. Anybody else? Council, you have anything before we start the resolution? Judy?
Can I modify the resolution or somehow?
You can do whatever you want. Just see if it passes or not.
Okay. I would make a motion to accept the resolution minus some curb of about seventy-five feet and a sidewalk on either side of Sixth Street between Eighth Avenue and Ninth Avenue.
I'll second it. Mr. Dankert? This is a resolution, so we have to take a vote. Mr. Dankert?
Councilmember Bowden.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Jordal.
Aye.
Councilmember Largie Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Do we need that resolution to cover this whole project, then? Okay. Thank you. Thank you, people that came and spoke on it. Item number nine is a resol, it's a public hearing on street and sidewalk improvement on Eighth Street Northeast, Second Avenue to Fourth Avenue, and Third Avenue Northeast, Seventh Street to Eighth Street, project four A fourteen. Mr. Lang?
This area you've described is just east of us here at City Hall, right on the other side of Cedar River. Again, shown on your map as Seventh Street and Third Avenue Northeast. Mainly a residential area, and, again, just some project photos showing, this is a, has old vertical-style curb in this area, a lot of deteriorated pavement that we are looking at to repair and replace as part of this project. Same sort of concept with this project. It'll be removal of the existing pavement and curb and gutter, replacement with new asphalt pavement and curb and gutter. This roadway, we're looking at thirty feet in width on Seventh Street and thirty-two feet in width on Third Avenue. Very narrow right-of-ways over in this area, which really limits the, the width of the roadway. We'll also replace in-drives, entrance walks, and grass boulevards. We'll replace deficient sidewalk and install handicap ramps. Storm sewer laterals and catch basins will be upgraded with the underground utilities. There is a large sanitary sewer trunk main that runs through Seventh Street, and we will look at a couple different options with that, possibly lining that sanitary sewer, or maybe just replacing it in its entirety. It's an old, the concrete line, we have televised it, and there are some issues with the, the condition of the existing line. Austin Utilities will replace the water main and the necessary water services at this time as well. We'll improve with the, with the project. Again, we'll have those same project improvements, same assessment options, and the same assessment rates that we have reviewed before. If someone chooses to put this on their taxes, it would be at a four point seven five percent interest. That is all I have.
Council, anything? All right, who's here to speak to the council on this issue? Ma'am, why don't you come on up? You, we need your name and address.
Wendy Shabert, eight oh three Second Avenue Northeast. You addressed the sewer on Seventh Street. Is that Hormel's? I mean, is that the old Hormel's? That's what I understand, that that's the old Hormel sewer line?
Yeah, there's a, a trunk main gravity line that, yeah, probably was an old gravity line for Hormel, which is no longer...
Is that going to be destroyed in, in this? Or, I mean, is that, is this something that Hormel's, excuse me, leaves you to do, or is that just...
No, it's a, there's other private residences to the north and east of this area that utilize this line. Even though they no longer utilize it, it's still utilized by, by residents in the area, so it will not be eliminated, but it will be either repaired or replaced.
Okay. I guess we, we just thought, being it was, had something with Hormel's, that maybe there would be some cost that they would cover?
No, they, they actually now, with the Hope Street lift station and the new force main, force main line, all of their waste is directed in a different route. They no longer use this line, so there's no benefit to them with the replacement.
I guess I'm going to be getting hit, I'm going to be getting hit double. I live on Second Avenue.
Corner house.
We use our, our driveway is on Third Avenue behind us, and then we own the corner, the house in the corner on Third Avenue Northeast. So, we're going to be hit on Seventh and Third. Kind of hard there.
You're the corner lot of Second Avenue and Seventh Street?
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
There's a, it's our house, and then it's an empty lot. And we own the white house, and we own the empty lot, and then we own the little house behind the empty lot. So, we can't have a squared, so...
Yep. They have a very unique-shaped lot. We also incorporated into our assessment policy this year, something to address these people that are along Seventh Avenue. They have frontage on Second Avenue, and they also have frontage on Third Avenue, which is pretty unique to have a street on the front and on the back. So, we've addressed that with our assessment policy this year. And, for instance, her frontage on, she's a corner lot, so her frontage on Second Avenue was, was credited to her based on a previous project that was done, I believe, back in the sixties or seventies. So, that was credited toward her overall assessment using a corner lot policy. She was credited that amount, which so that has reduced her assessment slightly for her lot that fronts Second Avenue.
Okay, so she has a reduced assessment, then?
And on the other one, it's a, it, you'll just be assessed on the one side of your property, right? That's what we determined? That's correct.
Okay.
Is there any way we can, can I get a copy of, you know?
Of kind of a drawing of what?
I'll just, of what you're, of what's in the, of what's in the agenda, just so I can, I, I have a neighbor that couldn't make it, and she just wants to kind of see what, you know, what the payment options are.
You bet. I, I can get you that after the meeting.
Okay, sounds good. All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Anybody else? I mean, if you're here, don't be shy. Come on up, sir. You can see the council is, definitely wants to hear from people. Need your name and...
I'm David Buck...
I'm David Buxton, eight nineteen Second Avenue. I've already been assessed cement on both sides of my house. Now they wanna do it on a third side. But, I don't know what they're gonna do. I got all my sewer and waterers out on Second Avenue. The sidewalk, I got it on Second Avenue and Eighth Street. Now they're gonna assess me for Third Street, Third Avenue. How about all the, how about all the sewer and water? Do I get assessed for that again?
Mr. Lang?
For sewer and water, there is no assessment for the underground utility replacement. There are user fees that go into paying for that replacement. So, there's no part of the assessment pays for sewer or water replacement. The last lady that was just up, she was at the corner of Second Avenue and Seventh Street. Mr. Buxton is at the corner of Second Avenue and Eighth Street. He actually has a three-sided lot, fronting Second Avenue on the south, Eighth Street on the east, Third Avenue on the north. So, we looked at his three-sided lot, added up all three sides, and divided by two. That's how we treated him with our corner lot policy. Looking back in our assessments, and I might get this slightly wrong, but I don't believe he was assessed as part of the Eighth Street project. When, either Second Avenue or Eighth Street, he was only assessed for one of those two projects. So, we, we applied that credit toward his corner lot policy, and then he was charged the remainder at this time.
So, he's also paying a reduced rate?
That's correct. Based on his previous assessment paid.
I don't get no sidewalk. I don't want.
Okay.
Good enough.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Okay, we have plenty of time. If there's anybody else, like I say, don't be shy. I think you've seen the council change the, the last one around, so it certainly makes a difference when people speak. All right, counsel, do you have anything else before we go forward? All right, with that, we need a resolution for item number nine.
So moved the resolution.
Second. Mr. Dankert?
Councilmember Bowden.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Jordal.
Aye.
Councilmember Largie Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
All right, that's our final public hearing. I wanna thank everybody that came tonight for the public hearings. We now are to, petitions and requests.
Mayor.
Yes, sir. Why don't you come on up here?
I might have missed, we went on the agenda, I wanted to keep on the Lansing Sewer Project, and maybe I missed the both earlier.
How, are you gonna be short?
Yeah, it's a little short.
Come on up, we'll listen to you.
Jim Davis, seven hundred twenty-seventh Avenue Northeast. And I was just wondering, the assessment, or the appraisal was due last October. This is now February, and we haven't heard anything yet. What the status is of this?
Stephen, yeah, or?
Craig, you have an answer?
Yeah, we're just working with our city attorney's office to develop the correct procedure for moving forward, and we'll bring that back to the council with, with what our options are.
And, and then, of course, when that happens, you'll be notified, the property owners will be notified.
Okay, now, this has gone on for like five years. We've been to court once already, some people have. The whole thing, the city lost everything on this and had to pay all the costs, except for the attorney fees, which is not legal. Otherwise, probably the city would have to pay the attorney fees also. But we've had to pay attorney fees, even those of us who didn't go to court, in preparation for this. Now we have to do it again. This was supposed to be done by last October. This lawsuit was almost a year ago. What, what's the delay? There, there are some people who wanna refinance their house. There are some people who want to put additions on their houses. Some people gave up because they wanted to sell their house and just paid it. What, why, why the delay?
Do we, Mr. Bernstein, do we, are you involved in this? Or Mr. Lang? I don't, I know it's not intentional, it's just, I mean, this is, we just talked about something earlier today, and they set a court date for, I think, April of twenty sixteen. That's because the courts are so full. I mean, there's no reason the city doesn't want this thing to, you know, done as fast as you do.
Has there been, has there been meetings on this?
Not that I'm aware of. Stephen, do you know of anything?
No, no meetings as of recently. Like I said, we are, our city attorney's office is researching all of our options. And once they come up with some additional information, we will be presenting that to the council. I just don't have any timeframes at this point.
We will make inquiries and see if we can't find out what the delay is and, and move a little faster. I agree, this should be, it's something we should take care of. But there's no reason for us to delay. I mean, if this is something that has to go to court or some, you know, the courts are so backed up, but it doesn't sound like this is a court issue to me.
It, it is a court issue, and it affect, it affects us because we're, we're stuck.
When I say court issue, does this have to go back to court?
Well, that's up to the city.
Okay. Well, we'll, we'll ask them.
And I, I'm sure there's been meetings on this. And I, I've been in contact with the Attorney General's office. And, I don't know, the city attorney probably knows the laws. He probably doesn't need it red here.
No, we don't need it red here.
Well, there's severe penalties if there is secret meetings, which I'm very suspicious there has been.
Well, then they're keeping them from the mayor too, and the council, and Mr. Lang.
I hope so, because one of the penalties is, is for the whole council and the mayor to be thrown out of office.
There's not, there's no meetings.
Well, I hope that's, I hope that's the case, but I don't really believe it.
Well, if you prove it then?
Also, this needs to be expedited. I mean, this has gone on for five, more than five years. We didn't wanna come into the city, those of us who are in this, who are in this dispute here. And it, it's time to put an end to it.
Okay.
Mr. Bernstein?
We, this was pursued by Lansing. We didn't pursue this. This was?
Well, it wasn't pursued by me.
But it was pursued by the majority of the people that lived out there.
No, it was not. It was approved by, it was, it was by a few people.
All right. Well, maybe, I don't know, I don't have the facts in front of me, but we're not, there have been no meetings.
The facts have been litigated, I don't know how many times, right here in the council office, how many meetings I've been to. And this was, the, the last thing, it was said this would be taken care of by October, and now you're telling me that you haven't even checked into it?
I see.
And that's six months ago.
Okay.
I'm, I'm sorry I lost my temper, but it is very frustrating to all of us.
You didn't lose your temper.
And we're losing our, we're losing money on this also.
I understand, and it should be taken care of. And if it's not being taken care of, people should know why. I, I, I agree with you on that, but there has been no meetings. I mean?
Well, I hope not. I hope not.
No, there hasn't been. Not that I'm aware of. You know, we've talked about different ways of doing the assessment, but there's been no meetings.
Well, the assessment, these other people I, I listen to, if it doesn't raise the value of a house by the amount of the assessment, it's illegal. Now, whether you like it or not, it's still illegal.
Somebody?
And we have, we have our rights, these people have their rights. If it doesn't raise their value by ten dollars, you can't charge them ten dollars. Or fifteen thousand dollars, like you're trying to charge us. If you don't like the law, then you have to change the law.
Okay.
But the way you're doing it is illegal. And if it goes to go to court again, you'll lose again. And how much money did you spend on attorney fees the last time? And you're gonna spend it again. And we're, we're gonna be forced to spend it again.
No, you're just repeating yourself. I, I got your message. I understand what you're saying, okay? So, I'm not gonna argue with you. I agree, I have sympathy for your cause.
I don't like to argue either, but I don't like to be bullied. And we're, we're being basically bullied on this. Our lives have pretty much come to halt. I'm in retirement. I've already spent one whole summer replacing my property. We've been through all this before, but I, I'd appreciate it if this could be taken care of immediately.
I have sympathy for you. I certainly agree with you, and we should give you some answers. And if, I feel for the people that didn't wanna come in. So, I, I understand that. And we'll, we'll do what we can to speed this along.
Thank you.
Thank you for, for speaking your mind. Okay. We're gonna go on to petitions and requests. Number ten is a resolution setting a public hearing for March seventeenth, two thousand fourteen, for street improvement project assessments. Just need a resolution. So moved the resolution.
Second.
Mr. Dankert?
Councilmember Bowden.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Jordal.
Aye.
Councilmember Largie Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Eleven is a motion directing the city engineer order an appraisal on five hun, or five oh four Twenty-first Street Southwest, the Howard property, as part of the Turtle Creek mitigation program. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Thank you. Number twelve is a motion accepting the city engineer's recommendation to take no further flood control action on the properties located at five oh two and five oh six Twenty-first Street Southwest as part of the Turtle Creek Flood Mitigation Program. Any questions on this? We talked about this at the last. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Thirteen, accepting December and January gifts to the public library. Need a motion, or a resolution?
So moved them.
All right, who made the resolution? Judy?
I'll second.
Okay, Mr. Dankert?
Councilmember Bowden.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Jordal.
Aye.
Councilmember Largie Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Okay. Fourteen is a motion granting the planning and zoning department a power contract for the removal of junk and or illegally stored vehicles at the following location, eight oh four Fourth Street Northwest and the Dia Cantor Property LLC. Need a motion? So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Fifteen is a motion setting a public hearing for April seventh, two thousand fourteen, for a vacation request by the Patelli Catholic Schools for property located on Third Avenue Northwest between Fourth Street Northwest and Fifth Street Northwest. We need a motion. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed? And finally, number sixteen, our addition, a resolution authorizing quality assurance testing on North Main Flood Control Project. Does any? Mr. Lang, why don't you explain that to us?
As part of this project, there's specific testing requirements to make sure that the quality of the materials are, are up to specification. Some of those requirements are, are part of the contract and up to the contractor to do. Other requirements are part of the owner, just to, as a double check, to make sure that everything is in compliance. We have gotten a price from Braun Intertek to complete some of this testing on behalf of the city. The testing rate, the cost, is nine thousand nine hundred and forty-five dollars. Things that they will be reviewing would be subgrade compaction, concrete pavement, and an asphalt pavement. With that, I would recommend awarding this work to Braun Intertek.
Any questions? If there are none, we need a resolution.
So moved the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert?
Councilmember Bowden.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Jordal.
Aye.